It's Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. The Board is going to enter into executive session to discuss 2.1 legal matter, 2.2 legal matter, individual student, and 2.3 negotiations matter, BHAA. And the time is 5 to 7, is that correct? Yeah, 6:55. Okay, we'll see you shortly.
Motion.
Oh, can I have a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you.
All right.
Okay, everyone, we're going to call the meeting to order.
It's like the sooner the sooner. Yes, that's the Genlomia phrase, the sooner is the sooner.
So I'm just going to say we're calling the meeting to order. We entered into exec session at 6:55 and we talked about 2.1 legal matter, district 2.2 legal matter, individual student, and 2.3 negotiations matter. And we are entering into public meeting at 7:32. And can... Let's see. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March 7th, 2023 meeting. And I'm going to throw it back over to you, Jen, for a moment for some happy news.
Yes, we have some happy news to celebrate and share with Board of Education tonight. A little known secret that the administrators and I know about, but you don't yet, which is we now have a new doctor among us, Dr. Jen Layden. I begin to thank you for even being here because I know that after that defense, it's pretty exhausting. So Jen graduated, she passed her defense. You're graduating when?
In May.
You will be graduating in May. And one of the advisors on her group is somebody who actually is a coordinator at Southern Westchester Council of School Administrators. And he said, to quote him, "Rock solid." So I am not surprised. So congratulations, Jen, and we're so proud of you. That is a lot of years of hard work and you are super brilliant and I'm happy for you that you made this much.
Thank you.
Yeah. I know it's that uncomfortable moment like, what? He said you were going to talk about... Okay, we had to share, Jen, yes.
That's wonderful. Congratulations. Well deserved. Okay, I'm having some technical difficulties, so I've got to go old school here. Let's see, can I... Oh, it's all right, thank you.
No.
Yeah. Give me one second.
Did that? Done there. Divisions.
Okay, any comments from the public this evening? Okay, hearing none, so let's go into the consent agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Oh, motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Thank you. Motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please. May I have a second?
Some of second.
All those in favor? Thank you. And, okay, and let's hear about tonight's consent agenda. We're going to discuss 6.1 through 6.10 consent agenda and consent agenda, special services, 7.1 and consent agenda, 8.1. Can I have a motion to approve, right? Consent agenda? Yes. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you, everybody.
And something I want to note, we had some CSEA resignations for the purpose of retirement and I would like to recognize Robert Daniele, the custodian for HCC, and Carol Malone and Maria Marone. I know they're all like rhyming every timing, but both of them teacher aides at Coman Hill. And I just have to say, when you get these retirements, you're not happy about them. So that is a great compliment to them and the work that they do, but just wanted to recognize them and hopefully they will share in accolades during the retirement dinner. And then also we had for special agenda for business, the business consent agenda. We want to thank Armok Bobcat Baseball, who are helping to support our baseball team's spring training trip to Disney this year. And they gave a donation of $21,691.84. I'm going to say.
Accept that with appreciation. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, and then we're going to tonight's special report, presentation of administration's proposed budget.
All right, so I will get started with that first and foremost, I want to thank all of the administrators who are here tonight and Susan Palmarcek, who is the bones behind this entire operation, supporting Kelly with that work. To see you here tonight and to see you supporting a district budget for our children, this isn't a budget for you, right? This is a budget for every child that's in your schools. Everything that you put into those budgets is something that you are putting in there for the benefit of the growth of a child, the growth of a program, the growth of an institution. None of this is for self-aggrandizement or self-worth. And on top of all that, you come here tonight and you say, we would like to support that budget for the district and support the superintendent and Kelly and Susan and everybody who put this time into it and our board members who are here. And I know that we have a few board members in the audience amongst our administrators in their own district, but board members who are here who are donating their time for children. So I want to thank you for recognizing the importance of this. This has, holds incredible value to me when we present this budget that we all worked so hard on for you to sit here and bring your faces to the table and say that we care about Byram Hills, we care about these students, and we care about doing it right. So kudos to you and thank you all for coming here. You know how strongly I feel about our teachers, our administrators, our kids and our families in this district. And it's always through a collaborative effort that we get to where we are today. And you are part of that collaborative spirit. So thank you for, as Tim would say, flying with me on the flywheel and avoiding the doom loop in life, right? And thank you so much for being here. Your support means everything to us. So tonight we have Petri's on from the Finance Advisory Committee. Finance Advisory Committee meets and then the entire Board meets as an audit committee to review the different steps of this process of putting together the budget. And Petri is one of those members.
So the Byram Hills Board of Education Finance Committee, we always try to be fiscally sound and responsible with our budgets, keeping our board goals in mind. Part of that entails enrollment projections, staffing needs, and any operations and movements that we may need over the course of the year for our district in compliance with federal state mandates. A couple of important quick dates. On March 21st, we will have budget hearing number two regarding curriculum, technology, special services, and fine arts. On the 28th, we'll be hearing number three regarding athletics, operations, and transportation. April 11th will be final meeting with the final adoption being approved on April 18th. During the course of April 18th, it's important for everybody to recognize that the budget will be proposed, will be presented at respective schools' principal coffees with the final budget vote being on May 16th at HCC.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, so we are starting the 2022-23 school year right now. Where we currently are, our budget is $96,939,312. The administration is proposing for the 2022-23-24 budget, $99,725,037. That's a budget-to-budget increase of 2.7-plus million or 2.8% budget-to-budget. So tonight, Kelly and I are going to be taking you through how this is comprised. But first, I mean, seriously, she's my favorite student ever, but she's one of 2,307 favorite students, but I'm...
I was going to say, you say that to everybody.
I love her. She's so great. I hope her parents are watching. All right, so how we come about with this budget is we not only have to analyze student needs and enrollment and related impact, we have more sections in these elementary schools coming in and floating through the elementary schools than we do, let's say, in sixth grade right now, which is one of our smallest numbers throughout the district. So we have to start considering those numbers as they're coming through, the staffing, the materials, and everything we need for these kids. We also have to consider all of these state mandates that come our way, contractual obligations. Every single year, we will have increases to teachers' retirement system or ERS, employee retirement system, or health insurance. And a lot of these increases, or whether they're moderate increases or up to 11% increases, we don't have control over that. So we always have to somehow weave that into the budget that we are working on. Operational costs and adjustments, we've seen quite a bit of that. We had some supply chain. Things are costing more than what we would anticipate, which resulted in us delaying the construction at the high school of the renovation of the library and the lecture hall. We know that we have contingencies outside or constituents outside of Byram Hills that impact how we spend our money and that we have to be fluid and fluctuate fluid when we're doing that work. We have a lot of work that we can't avoid waiting on. For example, we have a pipe that is going to be replaced on 22 between Windmill and Coman Hill, and that is of significant cost and it's something that has to be done and has to be done now. It's not something that we have the leisure of waiting for. And then we have debt service and debt services in the form of bonds that were taken out maybe before some of our administrators' births. And we're still paying them off and that's, it's like a mortgage, right? So we've been paying them off and continue to. We have two during the last handful of years that we have finished and we have one left, which is coming off in 2025. So the district has done a really good job in managing these budgets. The one consistent factor throughout all of this time, me and through all of my phases of Byram Hills and then now as a superintendent, is that Susan Palmarcek has been watching this and making sure that every superintendent and that every business official has looked at purchasing and payroll and every other factor that needs to be involved in managing these budgets from year to year, particularly when we have these outline factors that we have to measure in. And Susan has been excellent about making sure that we are retaining funds to do the construction in the buildings that we need to do, so we don't have to go out for bonds to revamp science classes, for example. You know, we take a moderate, like a measured approach. So thank you to Kelly and Susan for that. And then we have to look at insurance, unemployment benefits, reserve funds, and how we can make sure that we are reserving certain amounts of money so that when we have a big increase in TRS, let's say, that we can actually take money from the reserves and that is not impacting programs or anything else. So thank you for the good work that you did on that. And Piper, I'll see you tomorrow. All right, get off Piper. And now we're continuing the vision. I love this picture because on the left, although taxpayer monies are paying for our budget, we also have a very strong education foundation, which supports our schools and gives us things that our budget cannot afford. And you will see on the left, we have our patio at Coman Hill that the BHEF donated to Byram Hills and you can go there any day and see our Coman Hill kids out there in class or in snack or any kind of recreation time. So fully utilizing that. And on the right, thanks to our education foundation, we had the money to start startup, which we have many of our administrators here who have been a part of that, Lisa, Lisa running that course right now, Jen, Andrew helping, and Tim. So thank you so much for all that work that you're doing with that course. And that was an education foundation grant. So after these grants, we have to make sure in our budget, we have the money to continue running the program, right? We can't be asking for grants to do our operational costs. So trying to make those changes so that every student K-11 will have more opportunities than our graduating seniors. I always like to change that. But I also encourage anybody who's watching to go to our website under curriculum instruction and academic departments to see the fine work that's being done here in support of this budget. And next, we're seeing some district enrollment changes from '22, '23 to '23, '24. We are looking at approximately 48 additional students coming into our schools and in the year following, another 20 or so students. Now, the demographers do a really good job. They're pretty close with the numbers that they're giving us, but we always know that we're potential for many more kids coming into us over the summer months. And if you look at building by building, you'll see that K to 2 next year is going to see an increase of 14 students. 3 to 5 will have the most at 38. HCC takes a little bit of a dip, but that's mostly because you have that really small sixth grade class, Kim and Angela. So you're going to take a dip of 33 kids, but that's really because you're moving out a larger group and taking in a smaller group. And the high school is starting to see those increases now at 29. So all of those numbers are starting to roll their way through to the high school. And next, we have some staff increases commensurate with enrollment growth. So two elementary teachers, an elementary school counselor that is going to be at Coman Hill, and increase to the Byram Hills High School math teachers of another .4 of a position. And I think we just want to say that it includes all, I'm proud to say this, that we don't have to stand in front of our community and say that due to an increase in enrollment, we have to start making cuts in programs for kids. We don't do that. So I'm very proud of that. All our extracurricular programs are going to remain, transportation, athletics. And every time I turn around, there's some new athletics program that's happening. I mean, Rob, I have to say that that is some organization you're running over there. Just even to go to one of the events, and although I was really, really hopeful that our boys' basketball team was going to win Saturday night, and you actually, you had a lot of administrators here in attendance. Tim came, Gina came, I was there, Ira Schulman came to see, but to see that operation in action, and that was only one event, was pretty impressive. You have such a good team behind you, Brett Alcantara, Dan. You just really did an amazing job and it's grown every time we turn around. Rob will be presenting to us in the next couple of meetings and he'll tell us about all the other programs. We're so happy to see our kids involved in these programs. It's what brings us a sense of community and it makes kids feel that they can come to their school, right? So thank you so much for doing that, recognizing the importance of that. And now I really want to do this later. Should I? Yep. Come on, Kelly, that's why you got hired, so I didn't have to do that prior to one.
Now, for the fun part. So a school district's budget is formulated based on three components, the program, the capital, and administrative. The biggest portion of any budget is the program budget. That's your teachers, your teacher aides, your bus drivers, your psychologist, guidance, pretty much anybody instructionally based is in the program code. That's 73%. That's up from last year, it was 72.3% from last year. That's really just the shift in percentage between capital and program, and I'll get into that a little later. So that's, again, it's the supplies, the materials, the benefits, equipment of everybody in that program section. The next component is the capital component. That's your custodial maintenance staff, operational, security, debt service, utility costs, and our capital improvement plan. And that's 15.1%. That's a little lower from last year. Last year it was at 16%, and that's because we're not purchasing buses next year.
That's a whole other story.
Yes, I'll get into that.
Spent my entire day on buses.
Yes, I remember. And then finally, the administrative portion, 11.8%, that's up a little bit from last year. It was 11.7 last year. That's your central office, your board, your principals, APs, directors, chairpersons, legal counsel, and auditing. So that's everything administrative. In terms of the total budget, again, it's $99.7 million. Two computers going here. So just a little breakdown of the program budget. Just keep in mind, when you look at some of these percentages, it may look like a large percentages, percentage, but doesn't equal, sometimes doesn't equal a huge dollar amount. For instance, if you look at the 5.7 for social worker services, that 5.7 is about $5,300. Okay, so even though the percentage is large, it might not mean a huge dollar amount. Just to hit on a couple categories in this, you see the first category, teaching regular schools, a 3.7% increase. Like Jen spoke about, we're adding two elementary teachers, two elementary teachers and a .4 at the high school. So along with contractual obligations and that increase, that gets us to that 3.7% increase in that category. Guidance services, that 1.7% increase, that includes the additional counselor at Coman Hill. As Jen spoke about athletics, there's a 4.1% increase. That's our coaching salary increases as well as an increase in the amount for intramurals. Rob said a very successful program in terms of intramurals, so we're going to increase that budget a little bit in terms of athletics. And then finally, benefits, 5.7%. You're going to see that pretty consistent in the next two components, administrative and capital. Our health insurance has increased 8%. Employees retirement, Jen spoke about, went up 1.5%. And Medicare is projected at 14% of an increase. So you're going to see that pretty consistent in the next two components at around 5% to 6% increase in benefits.
So the 5.6% increase in benefits is excellent considering there's like an 8% increase worth, right?
Right.
So the increases that we have are much higher than the 5.7%.
In individual categories, yeah, health insurance, retirement, so those increases, but as a whole, that 5.7% increase.
And these are, like right now, for SWISSCHIP, we had 8% increase for our health insurance. SWISSCHIP actually incurred 15% of an increase, but because they had reserves, they were able to push down the savings, savings to us a little bit with the 8%. But what was NICECHIP, which is one of the competing health insurances?
Was 12% and then other groups are 15%. So we're actually in pretty good shape in terms of health insurance. Scary to say at 8%, but the last, last year we were at 1.5%, which is a lot lower than in the region as well. So the last two years, we've done pretty well in terms of health insurance, even though this year's 8%. Decrease in the capital component of 3.2%. Again, that's 15% of our total budget. The first category, 1.1% in our plan, that's essentially your custodial and maintenance staff and your utilities. We did have large increases in utilities projected in the next year, but again, as a whole, it's just 1.1%. Maintenance of plant is our, is our maintenance staff as well as ground staff. That also includes any building repair or maintenance that we have on our facilities and our equipment. So that's a 2.3% increase. Safely security, we've left flat. Those costs are SROs and our security officers and also any maintenance or installation of cameras in our buildings and facilities. Small increase in insurance, people transportation, we've dropped down to zero. With the mandate to convert to electric buses, we're going to take next year to study that transformation of our fleet. We're going to work with Con Ed and NICA to just get an idea of what that's going to take for Byram Hills. We do have a significant fleet. And Governor Hochul still has kept the mandate to replace all buses by 2035 with electric buses. And currently, after 2027, you're only allowed to purchase electric. So we have up until 2027 to purchase your diesel buses, your regular buses. We'll take next year and study that and try to get a plan going forward on how to do the replacement.
So Kelly, in a normal year, we buy one to two?
One to two, depending on, and vans, depending on need.
Which dollar amount wise typically would happen?
About a half a million, yeah.
So I guess the question, the question is, how is the state of the fleet right now? And skipping a year, while I think it does make sense, just given everything that's going on, it seems like the wisest course of action, but obviously, like, does that mean the next couple of years, we have a catch-up? Do we have a little bit of latitude? Because we also have a little bit of a, when the debt comes due, there's a little bit more flexibility in '26. And so what do you think about the overall state of where the fleet is?
Yeah, we're in good shape in terms of, this year's a good year in terms of where we are with the fleet in terms of replacement. You know, we usually replace for 10 to 12 years depending on the mileage. So we have buses that are, you know, with COVID, had a little extended time. So, you know, we kind of bought a year or two with some of our buses. So it's a good time to put that pause and to study it and try to, if we pick up next year and buy diesel buses or we don't, it's still a good time, you know, because we bought that year with COVID, not putting the miles on the buses. That was a rationale, right?
And the changeover, it's like a regular bus right now is about 150, 150. And the other buses, the electric buses are anywhere from 230 to 4, yeah. I mean, they're insane. And everything has to be replaced. So, you know, we have, we have a big task ahead of us. We have a bus garage that's in a flood zone that we have to have New York Power Authority come out and tell us, can we even put, can we even put stations in there since it's in a flood zone? Do we have to find another place to have these stations? They're talking about schools that need to do that, getting some aid back on trying to buy property to house your buses. I mean, can you imagine after we did all that? And then the infrastructure, you know, it's not only putting in all of the electrical, it's also the lift. The lift right now is not sufficient to carry the weight, the extra weight of this big bus, right? So there's a lot.
And, you know, it's a repair and training of our staff, too. There's no oil anymore. It's, they're all, you know, battery operated, so it's a...
And then you have to have a generator.
Yes, especially in this county. If you sneeze, it'll lose power, that's why we have generators, so.
So anyway, that's a...
There's a lot to be, yes, a lot to be studied, that's why we're...
That's next week.
The most difficult thing about this right now, well, there's a lot of difficult things about it, but separate from this budget process, I mean, there is an exercise to say, okay, over the next like five to seven years, what is the magnitude of the expense around this based on what we know today, which is not perfect. We also don't know if the cost of the buses will come down over time or if they'll go up because everybody needs to buy them, unclear, right? But I guess the biggest question in my mind is how much money, if any, will we get from the state? And I think that's been the message that we've sent to our legislative delegation this year, which is that they're saying that there's going to be money coming from whatever federal or state programs or the bond they passed, but no clarity at all in terms of how it's going to be allocated, unless you have any very recent clarity.
I do. So I was actually with the person in charge of facilities planning at the State Education Department this morning, and she claims, Kelly says, she claims that we are going... He said something else.
It's healthy skepticism.
She claims that we are going to be reimbursed for any of the hardware that has to go in for the cost of the lifts, that we are going to be getting that support. However, in that same sentence, she said that they have four engineers at the State Education Department, but there are only two engineers working right now because they can't fill these two positions for two years. They've been trying to fill these two positions. And they have four architects, and I think right now they only have one because one is retiring and they have two open positions as well. She's been in her role for a year. So this is the state of where we are. And she, I have to say, though, that she was doing a really good job. I was at a panel the day before with the busing, you know, she had everybody on that panel that you could possibly have. And she is really trying to do a good job of mediating between these different groups to try to get some support about what is the mandate from the governor and where is this money going to be channeled for it? It's a Herculean task and every single district is completely different. What they're telling us at these meetings is that, you know, people who hire out their buses, the buses are coming from such a far distance to take these kids that they're actually going to have to buy property to house the buses closer to the districts that they're serving.
They're going to run out of electricity.
They're going to run out of it. You know, what did they have, Kelly, last year? How many buses did they, how many electric buses were there that were made last year? Something like...
Not many.
3,000? But you're talking about in all of New York State, they're only going to create 3,000 buses in one year and we're talking about 700 schools, private fleets, and, and public, I don't know. It's a long process. So we have our steps.
Yes.
And our steps are going to be to get the power authority in here to look at whether we actually can do it. Kelly's also been looking at the solar field. He's continuing to progress with that, which would be very helpful to us, and we'll take that one step at a time. He's also having Thomas?
Matthews Bus.
Oh, it's Matthews.
Yeah, Matthews Bus wants to do a trial with electric bus in this area, so they reach out to us and that's something we'd be interested, see what routes we could do, what can't we do, and the timing in between, you know, the morning and the afternoon if we can charge. So that's going to be something we're doing next year, too. It's going to be, it's going to be a process. But, you know, I have a feeling it may get extended, that the time period in which you can purchase buses may get extended, but...
I think it's going to get extended.
A normal bus with, with supply chain, everything, if we order it in May, we get it in January. So in terms of getting an actual diesel bus, it's taking, you know, eight to 10 months. Electric bus, I'd imagine would take a little longer. So it's a process, but we'll study it next year, come up with a plan and bring it to you guys for review.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Debt service, decrease of 3.2%. We have about $7.2 million left in that bond. So over the next three years, we'll pay that off and then '25, '26 budget, we'll have no debt service. So a couple more years coming for that debt. And then finally, we've reduced the Capital Improvement Plan by $100,000, a decrease of 9.1% just based on the projects we've had for next year. As Jen mentioned, we're replacing the water main pipe at Coman Hill, doing some paving there as well, and then some sidewalk replacement at Wampus and HCC. So those are our projects for next year. As Jen mentioned, we're replacing the water main pipe at Goman Hill, doing some paving there as well, and then some sidewalk replacement at Wampus and HCC. So those are our projects for next year. And then finally, administrative budget, a four point four percent increase. Slight decrease from the Board of Education, just made some reductions in terms of our expenses there. That's about a five thousand dollar reduction. The only other thing I'd like to point out is athletics. You see an eighty one percent increase in there. That's just associated with the new position that we created this year, the Assistant Athletic Director position, so. And then our major budget drivers, as Jen kind of spoke about in the beginning of the meeting, are teachers' retirement, retirement systems. Fortunately, the teacher's retirement system is decreasing for next year. It's it's going down to nine point seven, and it was at a little over ten last year. So a decrease in retirement, to keep in mind, you know, a salary increases the percentage if they're, you know, it's not as much of a, if the retirement percentage increased, it'd be a larger, at larger expense as opposed to if it decreases. Yeah, that makes sense. And then the employees.
Still an increase.
Still an increase. That's that's a good summary. The employees.
Less of an increase than the year before.
There you go. The employees' retirement system, that did increase. That went from eleven point nine to thirteen point one percentage. So essentially, every dollar you pay to a ERS employee, this year, it's you have to pay eleven cents towards their retirement, next year it'll be thirteen cents. Okay? So it did, there was an increase in the retirement system for ERS, but the last couple, three years, it hasn't increased. So it's kind of catching up, whereas TRS has kind of been up and down. And then our contractual costs, the increases of salaries, our health insurance, which again is is eight percent for next year. And then Medicare is projected to go up to fourteen percent for next year. So some 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 large contractual increases and major budget drivers. In terms of issues of concern for public schools, you know, you've seen this a hundred times, the mandate relief, still still gonna be on there, still will be on there next year and probably the year after. I'm still waiting on some of that. The federal tax law assault, you know, that's still something that's been going on for multiple years, definitely hits this area even hard harder than a lot of areas in New York State based on that ten thousand dollar deduction limit. Converting to electric buses, again, another issue of concern for the school district as I laid out. Again, we'll be studying that next year, try to get a hold of a plan and a process going forward. And then student mental health, Jen?
Well, yeah, we've, we've had quite a bit. So Scott and I were part of West Putt conversations with our state senators and assembly members. And then I also participated on February twenty eighth in the Lower Hudson Education Coalition meetings with assembly members and state senators, and those were virtual half an hour meetings with them for lobbying purposes. And we spoke a lot about student mental health and the needs and and that we actually need facilities in our schools for student mental health, right? Because these kids, if they're going out and their parents, even in a community like Byram Hills, where typically people have access, right? It's still difficult for our students to go out, to find somebody who is a therapist, who could potentially be helping them with counseling sessions. They're, they don't take insurance, they don't, I mean, they're, it just, and there's no availability. We've got parents who call us to say that they're trying to get some mental health supports for their children, and they literally cannot find anybody who has that availability. So we've had a lot of conversations and a couple of school districts are doing it already where they are doing sort of in-house mental health. And we're looking for that to not be expense-based funding, but to be something that is actually a budget line for schools, so that we can start doing that to support kids.
Did they say what that would be comprised of? What type of clinicians or how that would, what would that would look like? Is it what we have now or just more of it?
It would be what we, what we do now, a lot of places don't even do. Right? So we have a flexible support program, and that is not enough to manage all of the general population in high school. We need some support. We have psychologists, but our psychologists are caught up a lot in CSE meetings and testing and everything else, so you actually need time for for kids. So we're looking to get more supports to have that in-house.
That's great.
Yep. School safety was another one. Pre-K, Scott and I had numerous conversations, and we met with Senator Mayer about pre-K and how different it is everywhere else. The amount of money that's coming for pre-K for area schools around us is fifty four hundred dollars a student. You know that we could not run a pre-K program at fifty four hundred dollars a student. And by the way, other places are having difficulty with that as well. So we're looking for something better with the funding there. Also, foundation aid formula, this is like the formula by which we get aid every year, and they use very old data. They use old census data, and they are counting us in the region of people in upstate New York and not in the region of like Westchester or New York City. So our regional cost index kind of makes it that it is, it's not good for anybody in this region. We typically get none of this foundation aid. We don't get much at all, but there are a lot of districts who get millions and millions of dollars in foundation.
And similar to last year, you're gonna see that this year as well. So the state's making up that that difference in foundation over over last year, this year, and the following year. So you're gonna see some districts in the area getting ten million dollars, three million dollars, one million dollars in foundation aid, whereas, you know, we're still getting that minimum three percent.
Yeah, and it's worth noting, especially this year even more so than last year, that some of our peer districts are getting significant increases, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty percent in foundation aid, and we're getting three percent. So I think when you look at our budget in the context of the region, we really do have this particular year, one of the tougher dynamics, because we just don't have that money coming in, and yet everybody around, not everybody, but many, many districts around us have a lot of money coming in.
If they're using this antiquated system to capture data, is there a way to sort of change that or lobby the basis?
Legislation.
Yeah, it's legislation.
Yeah.
And then one of them is employee retention and recruitment. And I was able, I was sat at a round table today with New York State Ed, talking about that and talking about issues that we have with science teachers and certification, that you're certified in physics, but, you know, you really can only teach physics. And then if we have a section of chemistry and how we're going to do that. And I also brought up world languages, Melissa, that, you know, we have three romance languages, and you're certified to teach Italian. And the certification process, to be able to teach Spanish is onerous for the teacher. There's gotta be an easier way, because we do have teachers who speak multiple languages, but they're not certified in those languages. And that's something that they were, they were very open to. They actually didn't know that the problem existed for world languages, but they, yeah, but they were, they were keenly aware of science. So I compared it to science, and they they understood that. So that's the work we've been doing. That's it.
So we talked about expenditures. On March twenty eighth, we'll talk about the revenue side, our state aid. The final budget is due April first from the state. Hopefully, we'll have some numbers before that meeting to talk about our final state aid numbers, but it shouldn't increase that much at all. And we'll talk about a tax levy, fund balance, reserve, and then our tax rates based on our individual towns through discussions with Finance Advisor Committee. We'll come back with a recommendation for the tax levy. And then.
School safety wise, everything that we need from an infrastructure perspective is in the budget and.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. You know, we've been doing a good job over the years of the cameras and.
Right, yeah.
Security manager, and, you know, we've, we've incurred a lot more cost for security at events, number one, and just even having to have somebody here until at least seven o'clock when there aren't night events.
So just in terms of the the calendar, we have our next budget hearing on March twenty first. Then the revenue and then budget hearing, number three, on March twenty eighth, our final proposed budget on the eleventh, adoption on the eighteenth, and then the final hearing on May second before the budget vote on May sixteenth.
And we'll hear from our administrators on those nights.
Yes, we will.
For a few minutes, three to five minutes.
Yeah, just to assess their budget, so.
Anyone have any questions about the budget?
Thank you.
I want to thank you so much for your, you know, hard work and dedication, you know, that comprises stellar offerings, you know, at Byram Hills, you know, for whether it's our enriched curriculum to the robust athletic programs. And, you know, we think about our partnership with the VHF and how they're the catalyst for a lot of wonderful programs, but it takes, in order to continue them, it takes our hard work that, you know, Kelly and you put in, Jen, and everyone does, to continue supporting all those programs. So we just thank you all so much for the hard work that you all do in keeping Byram the greatest place, wonderful place to learn.
And I have to say that for our administrators, they don't just come to work and do the work and go home. It's, it's coming to work, it's thinking outside of the box, it's having that liberty that the board gives all of us to develop what we think is right for kids. And that makes a huge difference, which is why everybody's here tonight.
We appreciate it very, very much, all the hard work that you do.
Okay.
Do we let everybody go home?
And.
Congrats one more time.
One more time.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a break.
Yes, thank you, everybody. We're back.
Yeah, that was.
We're gonna move on to unfinished business, a review of the policies.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Two policies, one of them has a regulation with it, so I will go through those for you. The first one is the disclosure of wrongful conduct, also known as the whistleblower policy, and that's ninety six forty five. So we revisited this because there was a change in civil service law. And I'll talk about the details of that change and how it impacted our policy. So first of all, in the first section, which is the introduction to the policy, we talk about, added a few things in terms of defining some examples of wrongful conduct. So we put some examples, just expanded the examples in that section. Then in that first section on internal reporting and investigation. So as we were reviewing this, the change in civil service law, they took out the section in the law that employees no longer have to report wrongful conduct to their employers. It used to be in civil service law that if you witness unlawful conduct and you report it even to a state agency, you needed to report it to your employers. And what they were finding was that because of that, sometimes employees wouldn't report because they were afraid of retaliation. Then if they felt they were retaliated against, if you didn't report to your employer, you couldn't claim protection under the whistleblower policy. So that was the reason for the change. They want more people to feel comfortable and not feel like they're gonna be retaliated against. So when we first drafted it with the policy committee, NISBA recommended language about, in that first sentence, in that paragraph, employees and officers who know or have reasonable cause to believe that wrongful conduct has occurred must report such conduct. NISBA was recommending that that was recommends that you report it if you're comfortable doing so. And then we had a good discussion at the policy committee meeting, and we went to our legal counsel, who told us, we're allowed to have a higher threshold in our policy. So we decided to change that. We want people to, if they notice wrongdoing, to report it to their employer, to report it to us, or the building principal, or the Board of Education. So we can have a higher standard in our policy, but if someone doesn't report it to the employer and they feel retaliated against, they can still claim protection under the civil service law. So that was, we decided, let's still keep our threshold because we want to know if that's happening. But if an employee doesn't, I mean, there'll be a violation of a policy, but they'll still get the protection. So that was a big decision. So we took a little extra time on this policy to discuss that. So that section goes on to talk about authorizing the investigation and then, you know, when to report directly. If the wrongful conduct is suspected against a superintendent, someone could report it directly to the Board of Education. So that language is clarified throughout the entire policy as well. Then you get to the section on complaints of reprisal, that is, if there's retaliation, it talks about the procedures at the beginning. Then the second paragraph gets into the investigation and how that occurs. And then the final paragraph, talking about the notification of the investigation and the process for notifying the final report and who that goes to. So that's sort of the details of that policy and the impetus for the changes. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Yeah, then I have another question.
Right, yes.
Good. Okay, thank you. And then the second one, policy and also a regulation. So this has a few things I want to go into depth about. It's the use of timeout rooms and physical restraints. So SED issued new guidance in December to reflect changes in education law. So two big things are around parent notification and the use of timeout rooms and restraints for some changes in the law. So first of all, you'll notice in the policy, even in the title, and throughout the policy, we removed reference to adversives, which refers to behavior, it's a behavior modification approach for severe behavioral issues. It's used for students with severe needs, generally in like a residential facility is when you would see that. So we do not use, we do not use adversives. And it's, if you are going to use it, if you have a program that requires the use of that, you actually have to apply with the commissioner to get, to talk about her plan and how you're doing that work. So we've never used that. We don't have programs that require such behavior modification approach. So we felt taking it out. If that were ever to come to be where we needed to do that, we would revisit the policy because we would have to go through a full application process with the commissioner anyway. So we felt like it made sense to, let's just take that out now in this policy. So you'll see that in there. Another thing is, another detail is the timeout rooms. So generally, timeout rooms, well, what they are used for is to de-escalate a situation when a child may be in danger of harm, harming themselves or in danger to, or just need to be regulated. So to de-escalate a situation. So we currently don't have a timeout room. That would be something that is outlined in a student's IEP and have a behavioral plan. And we don't have that right now. If that were ever to come to fruition where it was included in a student's IEP, we would then create that space for that room. So the policy and the company regulation, I'll go into a little more details, outlines what the details are about the use of a timeout room, even specifically about the environment, what the environment's like, and details about it, how long a student could be in a timeout room. So the regulation talks about it, and I'll go into details there. But we currently do not have a timeout room because it's not in a student's behavior plan in an IEP. And then the third piece is physical restraint. That is, you'll see, again, we removed mechanical restraints, because again, we don't use mechanical restraints. That would be like using generally a table or a lap belt or strap with students. And that type of physical restraint, we do not use, but there are physical restraints we use, not mechanical restraint. So physical restraints, they're infrequent and rare, but we do have staff and faculty trained, and they must be trained in order to implement the use of physical restraints. So there's a training process for that. So it is meant to be infrequent, and we have used it very infrequently.
Is it when somebody's in danger to themselves or to someone around them?
Exactly, right. Yeah, if someone's in danger, either harm of themselves or others, and that's when it would be used.
And it's kind of like a hug.
Exactly, right. Yeah. So there's training about it, and again, we're not using mechanical restraints in that case. It's just, you want to make sure you're not gonna cause any danger in doing so. And there's extensive training in that process. And we do currently have staff and administrators trained. And then there's parent notification and a clarification in the new law about parent, notifying parents the same day that either a physical restraint or a timeout would be used, timeout room would be used. And so we just revised, included that in the details of the policy. And that we note in the policy, it will be as soon as possible, we will contact the parents, but it has to be the same day, and you make best efforts to reach that parent the same day. So that's the policy. And then I'll just quickly run through some changes in the regulation. So the regulation is specific to the procedures for the use of a timeout room, and that's where you see the sections. The first one is on the physical requirements, about having a safe required environment. So it could include that it has to be, the student has to be visible, and you have to be able to hear the student in the room, floor coverings, the student has to be able to move around, so it can't be like a little confined space. So there's an outline of what that would look like. It needs to be continuously monitored if a student is in there. It can't be a locked room, it has to be unlocked at all times, and the door has to be able to be opened from the inside. from the inside. It has to be outlined in the IEP of what the behavioral intervention plan is to use a timeout room, so that's how we know that we need one right now because we don't have an IEP that requires a room. There's factors that lead to when a student would be put into the room, like under what conditions does it, will you use the timeout room? There are time limitations on it, and that would generally be spelled out in that behavioral plan. And it does say, if you ever had to be used for an emergency where it's not in a student's IEP, but you had to use the timeout room, the maximum is 30 minutes, and that's what's stated in the regulations, but that would be reevaluated based on where the student is, because the whole goal of a timeout room is to deregulate the student so that they're ready to go back to their educational program. And then it outlines the details on training, and then again, the parent rights in terms of notification, that it has to be spelled out in the behavioral intervention plan, and that we have to notify parents the same day. So it's a lot of details, but an important policy that we want to make sure we get right. So that's the details on that one. And that's it with policy, so that's the first one.
Okay, any questions for Tim? Right, thank you so much.
I'm the policy committee.
Oh, and yes, thank you to Tim and the policy committee, and Gina, Jen. Let's see, so can I have a motion for a first read to approve 9645 and 4321.12?
So, is that second?
All those in favor? Thank you again to the policy committee. Okay, we have no new business this evening, right? Nope, okay, so on to staff reports. All right. I think I'm, oh, yeah, except to some point goals. Okay, that's okay. All I have tonight, other than everything that I shared with you of where I've been in Albany and what we've been working on and budget, et cetera, are our student highlights, our reading buddies at Coleman Hill, I don't know how much fun this is. This is where we have the second grade class, you've seen some of these pictures before because I've been sharing them, but Ms. Gordonaro's kindergarten class working with Jen Rall's second grade class to come in and engage students as their little reading buddies, they're very cute, they show up with their bags with the books that they picked out. When I went into Jen Rall's class, they were practicing, like, reading to each other and how they would read to the kindergarten kids, it was perfect. Still a lover of reading. And our Coleman Hill chess team, this was amazing. These kids actually sat for six hours, four intense rounds of games, and they came in second place among the kindergarten and first grade teams, so Liam Griffin, Davin, and Chase. So thank you so much, we are so proud of you, and then they brought their trophy into school, and they went to visit with Ms. McInerney and.
Those are huge, fantastic.
Wonderful.
Fantastic.
And our instrumental showcase at Wampus was so great, the kids picking out their instruments. Thank you to the high school, you'll see Andrew Bill over here, he was helping to bring the high school kids there so that the kids could get a sense of what each of the instruments are when they're picking them out, and that was a success. And I don't know why it's doing that, there you go. Matilda Junior, wow, that was insane.
So good.
I can't even believe it, I thought I was at a Broadway show, I'm not kidding.
They really did such a job.
And I even took my husband, because, you know, that's 27 years, that's your date.
You mean your security.
One of the kids thought he was my security guard. It's so crazy, like, I need one. It was, it was beyond fantastic, I don't even know what to say. A lot of the high school kids came to see it, it was a packed house each time, the talent was incredible, the camaraderie, they just did a phenomenal job.
They're excited to go to the high school shows.
Yep, it is great. And our national merit finalists, the eight semifinalists are now finalists, which is pretty impressive. There are 15,000 finalists overall in the state who are going to be considered for 7,200 some odd merit scholarships, we're so incredibly proud of this group. And I'd also like to point out that I only happened to see two, there may have been more students, but when I was at the basketball game, Tim and I were sitting together, and Samantha, like, was waving to the two of us, I mean, it was so nice that there's that camaraderie, that these kids showed up in full force for each other in all of their different events, I think it's just amazing. Yeah, it's a great group. We have our Byram Hills Talent Show that occurred, putting on Byron Scott Talent, and the event brought in $2,500 to support cancer and other charities, pretty amazing. And check this out, Nick Fortuno, Section 1 champion, right, he won his first match and finished the season 35 to 8. I think I wouldn't mind if you put my weight on there if I also won the match. I mean, I went to that, I was like, wow, he captured the 102 pounds Section 1 championship, just pretty amazing, love it. That's fantastic. And we have, coming up, Freaky Friday, Barley Players proudly presenting Disney's Freaky Friday, and I don't know if everyone knows, but Tom Kidd, who's a Byram Hills graduate, has some of the music in there, and it is a, yep, a Disney hit film, so we're looking forward to that. I'm going Thursday night with Mia's dad. Ready? Yes. Can't wait. What's going on with, like, it's a little slow, it's all right, we're all patient. The District Choral Festival, thank you to the Education Foundation for sponsoring this, this is where we have kids from all of the schools, Wampus, HCC, Byram Hills High School, back in Coleman, who were at the high school for the day doing all these different warm-up activities and everything together, it was absolutely fantastic. So there's the Choral Festival and the String Festival, so just a really great time to get the kids together. And some ears, go Bupkis, that's it, our students continue to do great things. And a hard loss by our boys Saturday night at the county center, but they're, they're pretty spectacular, I mean, the team that they played Valhalla was just, I don't even know what to say, I couldn't, my eyes could not keep up with.
They were so fast.
They were fast.
They were so good.
Unbelievable, yeah, but our Byram Hills players did us proud, we have a lot of kids in the audience, and families, and community members. There was a parent, a former parent, I think her kids are in their 30s right now, and she was there with her Byram Hills scarf on, and she said, we like to come to the games when the kids are having the games. I mean, she happened to have two girls, she didn't have boys, and she was at boys' games, so just great community building events. Grateful for our community for stepping out, for our boys who are, they may not have wanted to get to Valhalla, but they are pretty amazing, so, thank you. And to everybody who helps that organization run, I was sitting right behind Teddy Repo, which, like, just to see his coaching, so I remember this, the kids were getting very intense, and, you know, they, they were upset and intense, and they came off the court, and I watched Teddy just support them, like, hey, like, good conversations, it wasn't that sort of like, get out there, and, you know, it wasn't that kind of thing, and it's exactly what they needed, like, he just had that je ne sais quoi of coaching that I don't, I don't know about, but to witness it was pretty intensive.
It was great. It helped our kids, and they got better.
Yeah, they did, and then at the end, I mean, I really think if we had another quarter, we might have won that game.
I know, we could have come back.
Yes, we do think so.
If the kids got into the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thanks to all the coaches and Brett Alcantara, who did a great job coordinating that then. And proud of them to get to the county center, it's a big deal, and the county center looks beautiful, it's no longer the COVID facility.
Their parks and.
I know, yeah, they're going to continue to go far with that team.
It was great community building, you could feel the school spirit was just palpable around town, everybody really was looking forward to going out to that game, which was really, really wonderful.
We had some crowd there.
Yep.
One of the students colored his whole body red, yes. She had a blue shirt on, it was great.
It was just awesome.
I heard they were outside painting him in the parking lot.
I cringe, I'm like, you know I'm worried about the kind of paint.
Yeah, right.
Is it a palette?
It's going to suffocate.
Right, that's right. Is it real body paint or?
Bo paint.
This is all right, that's all I have. Tim, yes, what do you have?
Sure, just want to give an update on two things. First is the literacy study update, we held our third public meeting last month in February, it was a great presentation by two faculty members from Coleman Hill, Kath Meany, a first grade teacher, and Lana Levy, who is a reading specialist, and they presented on how our students learn phonics and phonemic awareness and vocabulary and handwriting through our foundations program. And it was really energizing to the parents who were there to learn and see how we instruct kids using a multi-sensory approach, really great presentation, they put a lot of time into it, and it was a good conversation. We discussed also the research behind the phonics instruction as well as read-alouts, and where, how read-alouts help support students' oral language development and vocabulary and comprehension. So it was a really good night of learning with our, with our families. We have two remaining meetings with the literacy study group, who won this month and then next month, and then at the end of that, I'll bring our folks together to sort of summarize our takeaways from the five sessions that we've had, and I'll present that to the board. And in the meantime, I'm working with our principals Peggy McInerney and Dave Mack, and Assistant Director of Special Services, Kim Sapon, to set some goals for the next about, you know, two or three years, based on what we're learning about our literacy curriculum this year from the study and all the work we've been doing. So we're putting together a pretty detailed goals document for us that I'll present by the start of next year to you. And then finally, state testing is coming up, we're getting to the spring, so we'll have our grades three through eight tests in ELA math and science. We will be doing computer-based testing this year in grades four, five, and seven. The state is mandating that rollout of CBT, so we are a year ahead of the rollout, so get our kids ready for next year. Next year, we plan to have all students, grades three through eight, doing the computer-based testing.
So will the computer ones come back fast, or no?
The results, I don't think so yet, I mean, what's, the whole state is involved in CBT, I hope so, I think that's the intent, but I've been waiting a long time for the state to get faster at giving results. For about 10 years, I believe.
Why sixth grade not doing it, because it's their first year of middle school?
Yeah, yes, and third grade as well, so next year, the state's mandating fifth grade and eighth grade, so we wanted to start with four and seven, and then the fifth grade teachers wanted to get familiar with it, so we brought fifth grade in as well. So next year, we'll do, we'll bring in third, sixth, and eighth into that. And those dates are, it's April 9th and 10th for our ELA tests in grades three through eight, May 2nd and 3rd for the math tests, and then the science in eighth grade is June 1st and 5th. Remember, there is no fourth grade science assessment this year, the new science assessment at the elementary level will be in grade five next year.
Yeah.
So that's my update.
Thank you so much, Tim.
Thank you.
Let's see, anything else from Kelly? Okay, and Gina's not here this evening, okay. Let's see, so board reports, I just have a couple of things. The first is that Jen and I attended a town forum this week, it was held at the library that I guess Mike Schlierow had put together, and it was to just talk about PFOS and the water within the town, and what's acceptable limits and all of that. So the results of the test of water coming into Coleman Hill, which is the only school that was.
In question.
In question, exactly, are below the acceptable limit, which was the 10 parts per trillion. So we did indeed figure that out and find that out, which was wonderful to hear, and if you want, I think that that, the meeting was taped, and you can see it if you go to the town.
Yeah, it's on the page.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Don't want to add anything about that.
We just had another inquiry from a parent today, Kelly received, just asking about PFOS levels in the water, so Kelly's going to forward that information to the parent.
Right, okay, good. And the other thing I wanted to say is that one of our favorite things to do every year is a board is to go visit all the schools, we make a board visit to each school, and we're starting that tomorrow, so our first visit is going to be to HCC in March 8th, tomorrow, and then Friday, March 17th, we'll be visiting the high school, Wednesday, March 22nd, the board will go to Wampus, and Tuesday, March 28th, we will go to Coleman Hill and just see what's new and check out the building and meet with the principals and assistant principals. And that's what I have, anybody else have it?
I have, I think we might both have something, Scott and I, there've been two PTSA meetings since our last board meeting, so I'll report online. They're doing a lot of work on the PTSA right now. April 12th, there's a literacy event with Molly, who, it's a K through 5 literacy event with Molly, who's one of our literacy consultants. And they're also working on, with Landmark College, to do an executive functioning tonight for parents. There was one this morning through guidance with Landmark, which was very interesting, so I think that'll be, that'll be great. And they're also working on, which was very interesting, creating some social committees for the, with, through the PTSA, so I guess they were finding that there were a lot of new people coming into the district who missed the preschool association experience that, that helps you meet other parents and develop those relationships, so they are exploring some ways to implement some sort of social groups for the parents at the Coleman Hill/Wampus level specifically, but perhaps if they go well at the.
Social for parents or for the kids?
For the parents.
For the parents, yeah.
Like book clubs and things like that, they're looking to.
I think they're talking about different options.
Yeah, that's great.
But, you know, they were getting a lot of feedback that, from these new, you know, this influx of new parents, that they, there wasn't a lot of ways for them to meet other parents. So they're responding to that feedback, which is great, that's it for me.
That's great, and to add to that, so the meeting today, boy, a lot of different initiatives, like you said, it's amazing how many things they're doing across all the schools, sustainability, that's been a focus, it's been a focus for a long time, but now it's a focus even going into the high school and working with kids and really being collaborative. Food trucks for sports are gearing up, spirit wear sales, magic show, supplies to please, which I'm like, oh my gosh, already, but they just started planning it now for, so a lot of things that were discussed today. And then the BHGF meeting happened, I guess it was about a week ago or so, and a lot of stuff going on there as well, including just evaluation of grants, so it's always exciting to.
Yeah, like, for grants.
Yeah, a lot of grants in the pipeline, so that's awesome. And then the third thing is just, we had a fair number of legislative meetings over the last few weeks with small groups with our legislative representative of some of the districts in our area, and that are also under the same auspices of the same representatives, just really talking about all the issues that I think you touched on eloquently when we were going through the budget, lots of issues out there that we can use their help on, so.
And they're listening.
They are, and I think it's important, this particular year, to let them know that our situation is not what they think it is, because I think the perception is, oh, everybody's getting all this money, and so everybody's great, but, you know, we're not getting the same increase, and so it's important that they know that, so, good to have those conversations.
Thank you.
Thanks for your leadership on that.
Yes, really appreciate that. Anyone else, board report? Okay, communications to the board, anyone have a communication? No, there are not, okay. So, and, oh wait, here we are. It's on here, but not here. No, I see it on our agenda. Right? Yeah, so the minutes are not attached for 15.1 for the approval of the Board of Education minutes, so we will take those, that approval off and put the minutes on next time.
I think this.
Oh, here it is, it is here.
It is, it's here.
It's here.
In the agenda details, it's.
You see it?
Yes. Let's do it next time, because I didn't review them, I'd like to review them, so we'll do it for next time, we'll see.
I don't know where they see it, because I don't see it.
I don't see it.
Do you want to see it?
It's in board docs.
Yeah, it was in board docs when I looked, but now that I've opened board docs here, when Lara said that, it's not showing up.
It's not there right now.
Right, right?
Yeah, but I did look at it.
I know, you're seeing it, but we're not seeing it here.
We're mildly seeing it.
No, I have a reason, yeah, thank you.
I saw it before too.
But thank you, Melissa. So we're going to approve the board minutes next time for the February 7th meeting, and then tonight's meeting, March 7th. Okay, so I guess that's it, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move to second.
Second, all those in favor? Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.